Call this the May meeting of the Williams County Commission to order. We'll start with the invocation by Commissioner Sturgeon and the pledge of allegiance by Commissioner Lathers. Please stand.
I'd like to start our invocation with Scripture, Philippians 2. Do nothing out of selfish ambition or vain conceit; rather, in humility, value others above yourselves, not looking to your own interests, but each of you to the interests of others. Dear Lord, Eternal Father, I ask that you give us the gift of your wisdom for the next four years over the county commission so that we can serve our community faithfully, with integrity, and with your guidance. Let us pray. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come; thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us, and lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. Amen.
Join in the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, we will have roll call. If you would, please sign in and press your present button. Yeah, just get it.
It's Monday, people. It's been this way all day.
Yeah, you should, that's what you should say. Is everybody, has everybody signed in? No? Call the roll, please.
Twenty-three present, one absent. Commissioner Alsbrook's absent.
Thank you. Next, we have approval of the minutes. These were emailed to you. If you're approved, press your yes button. Opposed, your no. Well, do we do need the motion, don't we? Although it's, alright, so. Do we have a motion and a second? Alright, we have Steve Smith with the motion and Dwight Jones with the second, since I was jumping the gun. If you're in favor, press your yes. Opposed, your no. Anyone change your vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, please.
Twenty-three yes, zero no.
The minutes have passed. Next, we have citizens' communication. We have three that have signed up. There is a three-minute time limit. If you come up, if you would, please state your name for the record. And first, we have Raina Reddish.
Is this on? Yeah. Good evening, Chairman, Commissioners, Mayor. It's good to see you all, and I appreciate this opportunity to comment. I'll take my three minutes, which is about 10% of what it took me to get home from 8:40 to my house because of First Bank Amphitheater last week. So, that's part of my comments, is what that has done to my community. I know it's only 15, 20 dates a year, or so they say, but it's 15 or 20 dates every year. I have to make sure I know, because if I don't, then I can be caught in two hours of traffic trying to get home, because I didn't go the right way. And it's insane. And it's my understanding, they came to this county and asked permission to build that, and they were denied. And Thompson Station went in there and approved it. And if any of you have been down Lewisburg Pike recently, you know it looks exactly like it did 20 years ago, save the changes we made for 8:40 so you could get on and off. It's a little two-lane road, and that little two-lane road turns into another little two-lane road that may or may not get widened. I don't know what all the county can do about it, but I'm hoping that you can look some way to protect us in the Bethesda area. I know Commissioner Herbert and Commissioner Hester, who heard me multiple times, got all my emails, and I so appreciate how much they listen to us. But I do know, in the upcoming months, that there's going to be an opportunity to vote against their choice and want to expand their urban growth boundary. So I'm here to start my campaign to ask you to not approve their request to expand the city of Thompson Station, or the town of Thompson Station. They have proved themselves to be inconsiderate and choosing to inconvenience others for their own benefit. And that is not who we are as a county. And I'm just asking you now, as this moves forward, to really think about giving them another piece of real estate to, in another community, to change in a way they would not want to be changed. And that's the Bethesda community. And I probably won't be the only person up here asking you now and for however long, I guess that's my three minutes.
Actually, you have 20 seconds, but that's it.
Okay, okay, okay. I'll take my 20 seconds. Just to sum it up, what they did to us with that amphitheater is gross. It's gross what they did to us. We have to make decisions every time they have a concert about whether we can get to a ballgame. Last year, before my father passed, I had to rethink when I could go see him, because I didn't know when I could get home. And I shouldn't have to do that. And I do appreciate it, and I'll probably be back with more comments about UGBs. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Jane Sadler. Please state your name for the record.
Good evening. My name is Jane Sadler. I live at 4650 Gander Branch Road. And Gander Branch is located off of Harpeth-Pattonville, which is one of the roads that's being used by patrons of the First Bank Amphitheater. And that's one of the things I'm talking about tonight, is the enormous amount of traffic we are seeing from First Bank. We are being gridlocked in. My concern is, if there is a medical emergency that happens along Harpeth-Pattonville, Lewisburg Pike, in the Harpeth Woods subdivision, what is going to happen to those individuals? We need to look at traffic as a health and safety issue. And right now, this is a tremendous health and safety issue. We have watched traffic just come to an absolute gridlock. I've been taking screenshots from my maps to show how things get gridlocked every time there's a concert. The only night we did not have issues was the night of the Nine Inch Nails concert, which was a Sunday night. I realize they are approved by the town of Thompson Station, and the county really doesn't have any authority over a municipality, but Harpeth-Pattonville, which I'm located off of, is a county road. I'm requesting the leaders in Williamson County step up and be the adults in the room. Ask the people from Thompson Station. Ask the owners of First Bank Amphitheater. Ask the patrons who live in this area. Talk to us and help us so that we don't have to decide, when do I go get my groceries? Can I leave work early tonight? Oh, I didn't leave early enough. Now what am I going to do? Am I going to sit in a restaurant somewhere? What's going to happen with us? And heaven forbid, we have some type of catastrophic, or even just a minor incident. We all know, with a stroke, you have a golden hour. You can only go four minutes without oxygen if you have a heart attack. What if someone is breaking into your home? Do you want the police to go, hey, sorry, we'd like to get there, but we can't get to you? They're coming from both directions on Harpeth-Pattonville. Even on a regular weeknight, that traffic is tremendous out there. And I know they had a counter out the other day to see the traffic. But I'm asking for the sheriff, the mayor, the commissioners, everybody here, to please step up. Be the adults in the room. Thompson Station will not be the adult. We need to be the adults. Pull them in, and let's come with a decision. He's asking T.DOT for permission to widen Harpeth School Road. If T.DOT does not grant him permission because it's in their right-of-way, what are the next steps? We need, excuse me, we need some help. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Joshua Sadler.
So despite all of the things that have gone, sorry.
Please state your name for the record, please.
Sorry, Joshua Sadler, 4650 Thompson Station. So despite all the complaints of the community, I think it's important to note that we're not opposed wholeheartedly to growth. We're not opposed to the existence of an event venue in this area. The fact is, this event venue of this size, this size was originally supposed to be 5,000 seats, and it was moved up to 7,500 seats late in its construction. Our issue is that we feel as if the town of Thompson Station and the owners of this venue haven't been good neighbors to the surrounding area. And I understand that later this year, the mayor's office will actually be sitting down with the different cities and municipalities within the county to discuss a unified urban growth boundary for how everyone in this county is supposed to cooperate. I also understand that members from the state legislature are going to be looking at the different counties and their urban growth boundaries to try and determine a better way to organize the way that cities annex and grow. And so I think now is a really good time to actually sit there and take a look at it and understand, these are the issues where one party moves in and they're not cooperating. They're not being neighborly. These are the, this is our chance to actually kind of set the record and really be innovative with our solutions to ensure that everyone in this county has an equal voice, and that no one is feeling pushed aside or mistreated simply because a municipality wants an extra source of tax revenue. Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, that concludes citizens' communications. Next, we have communications and messages. We have two proclamations, and I guess we'll call on Rogers.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, we have two proclamations tonight. One of them is the emergency medical services. This is Emergency Medical Services Week, and I have, I know Mark is here, so I'd like to read this into the records. Whereas our emergency medical services is a vital public service, and whereas the members of the emergency medical service teams are ready to provide life-saving care to those indeed 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and whereas access to quality emergency care drastically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience southern illness or injury, and the emergency medical service has grown defilograph by providing important out-of-hospital care, improving preventative medicine, follow-up care, and other vital services and resources. Whereas the medical service system consists of first responders, who medical technicians, paramedics, critical care paramedics, emergency medical dispatchers, firefighters, police officers, educators, administrators, emergency nurses, emergency physicians, trained members of the public, and other out-of-hospital medical care providers. And whereas the members of the emergency medical service team, whether career or volunteer, engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continuing education to enhance their life-saving skills, it's appropriate to recognize the value and accomplishments of the emergency medical service provider by designating May the 15th through the 21st as Emergency Medical Service Week in Williamson County, and it's by signature that we are doing that. Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Anderson. Again, my name's Mark King, and I stand here before you to thank you for the recognition of EMS Week. We're really proud to serve this community, proud to be a partner with many members. As you notice in the proclamation, there's a lot of people that's involved in EMS. And so, we're the EMS department, but also we have a lot of teammates that work with us. We're proud to be a part of Williamson Medical Center and provide first-class care that's nationally recognized. This is our 50th anniversary to provide EMS in Williamson County, and we're honored to do that. And we just wanted to tell you thank you and appreciate the recognition.
Mr. Chairman, while I have the floor, it is also Fair Housing Month, the month of April. And we have some individuals from the Williamson County WCAR, and I've got David Pear, who's going to take the pictures, I understand, and one of our ex-county commissioners. And Bo Baden is here, and Missy Woodford is also here tonight to accept this award. So if you would, just come on up. Whereas April the 11th, 2022, marks the 54th anniversary of the passage of the Fair Housing Act, which is a national policy on the fair housing for all who live in the United States. Whereas the Fair Housing Act prohibits discrimination based on race, color, religion, sex, handicap, familiar status, and national origin. Williamson County and the state of Tennessee additionally prohibit discrimination. And whereas fair housing is a positive community good, and whereas economic stability, community health, and human relationships in all communities are improved by diversity and integration. And whereas fair housing is integral to the ethical commitment of members of the National Association of Realtors and Williamson County Association of Realtors, and is critical to the ability of all real estate professionals to serve their clients, their customers, and the communities. Whereas the acts of housing discrimination and barriers to equal housing opportunities are repugnant to the common sense of decency and fairness. It is by my signature that I have signed on April the 11th, designating this Fair Housing Month proclamation. Mr. Chairman.
On behalf of the association, just want to thank you all from the county partnering with us to ensure that we can provide fair and equitable housing for anyone that wants to call Williamson County home. We have 3,100 Realtors that work every day to serve their clients well, and we appreciate the county partnering with us in Fair Housing Month each and every day as we go out to work for our clients and bring everyone that we can into this community to call home.
Only other communication message I have is a reminder about the Memorial Day celebration at Five Points will be on May 30th at Five Points at 11:00 a.m. So mark your calendars. I believe that concludes that. Next, we have reports of county offices, and call the mayor back up.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If I could have Nina to come up and kind of give a snapshot of the county for the last almost 60 days. Nina?
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioner. In your packets this evening, we have our reports from the Cool Springs Conference Center. For the month of February, we had a gain of $25,780. For the month of March, we also had a gain of $51,904, which brings our year-to-date total to 2,56841. Also in your packets is the education impact fee report. Life to date, we've collected $100,874,517. We currently have $51.3 million available to use on projects. For the month of March, the privileged tax collections were a little over 1.7 million. Also in your packet is our March month-end budget reports. Nothing unusual to report to you. We're working on wrapping up our year and closing out our budget process for the upcoming year. So that's all of my reports. If you have any questions.
Are there any questions? Seeing none? Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I know you have a lengthy agenda tonight, so I'll answer any questions that you may have.
Are there any questions of the mayor? Alright, seeing none? Thank you, sir. Alright. Schools Director Gold.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and Commissioners. Thank you all for your work. We are two and a half weeks left in a really good school year, and our students will be finishing up the school year. Our seniors will be graduating. I often give you numbers, so I thought I'd give you our student enrollment numbers as of Friday, last Friday, the 6th. We had 42,306 students pre-K through 12. That is 1,431 more students than we had at the end of the year last year, to try to come close to giving you apples to apples. We still have about two weeks, but it's going to be very close. 1,431 students over end of year. We actually base our budget on the end of the first four weeks, the beginning of the year, but I thought it was interesting to tell you where we are based on last year. We actually have nothing on your agenda tonight, but we will be coming next month with our end-of-the-year items to make some intercategory transfers or so, so we'll balance out zero this month with a number up in next month. And I'm certainly available for any questions you all may have.
Are there any questions? Seeing none? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Williamson Medical Center.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. With me tonight is Mike Genessy, my CFO, and I'm going to let Mike give the financial update, and then I'll make some brief comments after.
Good evening. You all have the financial package. Summarize what we have. You know, we're starting to see that our volumes have waned a little bit, getting back to our normal pre-COVID levels. You can see where we are versus our, you know, our monthly averages. And I think for the most part, most of our key stats are a little bit lower than they had been for the budget. We generated 26 million in net revenue. We had almost 26 million in operating expenses, and we made $1.3 million in net income for the month. We had a really good month for cash. March fell with great calendar days. We had five Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursdays, and those are our biggest cash months, or days. So I think we had our record cash month. It's a good thing, because we had, we spent about $4 million in between our debt payments, and we had a $2.5 million Medicare advance repayment from that. So if, unless there's any other questions, the month was getting back to what a normal month would be for us, I believe.
Are there any questions? Seeing none? Alright, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thanks, Mike. First, I'll give you an update on COVID. Our COVID inpatient census is four. We've been in the low single digits for the last two months. In the last week, we went from zero to four, and so I got a little bit nervous about potentially moving up again, but we have been stable in the three-to-four range for the last week. From a project standpoint, we had a successful groundbreaking on April 4th. I appreciate all the Commissioners that attended in our support, and all the elected officials. Our general contractor has been very active ever since the groundbreaking, so things are moving as expected. Our first phase, which is the ER and the West Tower, we're still projecting to be complete by the summer of 2024. I just wanted to give you a quick update on EMS. We did have our ribbon cutting for our new Brentwood EMS station on March 9th. And in the last two months, April and May, were projected to log about 600 hours of EMS support for special events in our community. So I thought that would be interesting. And the last thing I want to do is I want to talk a little bit about our team. So, over the years, the month of May has become a special time to recognize healthcare workers in our country. The celebration started this past Friday on May 6th with National Nurses Day. It continues this week, May 8th to the 14th, with National Hospital Week. And as you heard, next week, May 15th to 23rd, is National Emergency Medical Services Week. Today, I'd like to publicly recognize our nurses and team members, and express my gratitude to our staff of almost 2,000 dedicated caregivers that stood up to the healthcare storm of the century. As you heard me say many times before in the past two years, dealing with the pandemic has been extremely challenging for healthcare providers across the country and across the globe, including our hard-working, compassionate, and resilient staff at Williamson Medical Center. Healthcare providers essentially have been in a trauma situation for two years, taking care of a much sicker population while constantly adjusting to the latest guidelines, treatment standards, learning new protocols, and working more shifts than they've ever worked before per week. We have been working diligently for the past year to find creative ways to restore, encourage, and support our staff members emotionally, physically, and professionally. Some of these initiatives have included partnering with local restaurants to provide special meals, creating a COVID-19 reflection wall. We had visits from therapy dogs, and we opened a new meditation space for our staff. This week, we're celebrating big with five-day celebration recognizing Hospital Week. The celebration will include an ice cream sundae bar, carnival-style games, new t-shirts, service awards, and a cookout on Friday. During this week of national recognition, we're saluting and celebrating all of our staff for their commitment to providing the highest-quality healthcare to our patients and their families. We feel honored each day to have firsthand experience watching our talented and compassionate healthcare heroes help us fulfill our mission of meeting the healthcare needs of the communities we serve. They have been and continue to be so important to our hospital and to our community. Please remember that our team has been under a great deal of pressure the past two years. I want to encourage each of you to find one healthcare worker to reach out to and thank this week. It might be a relative, a neighbor, or an employee at your doctor's office. Anyone who works in healthcare would very much be appreciative of a word of gratitude this week. Thank you.
Three in the other departments, which can make a report. Next, moving on to elections and appointments. First, we have sports authorities. Six-year term expiring in June of '28. Term expiring Scott Speedy. Nomination Scott Speedy. Entertainer motion? Motion by Steve Smith, the second by Dwight Jones. Any discussion? All in favor, press your yes button. Opposed, your no? Betsy, did you have a question?
I'm having trouble with connecting to the internet, or I...
We've got your vote, so it worked.
Well, it keeps going in and out, but I... Well, it keeps going in and out, but I'll keep working on it.
Do you want to voice vote on this, Bert? Do you want to voice vote on this one?
No.
Yes, it's for you. Yeah, but you... All right, you want to say yes?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Can you record Bert as a yes? Okay. Any wish to change your vote? Record the vote, please.
23 yes, 0 no.
Okay, now we're appointed. Next, we have the Agricultural Committee, two-year term expiring in May of '24. Term expiring Paul Webb, nomination Paul Webb. The motion by Brian Beathard, the second by Ricky Jones. Any discussion? Seeing none, if you're in favor, press your yes button. Anybody wish to change your vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, please.
22 yes, 1 abstain.
Is appointed. The Disciplinary Review Board, two-year term expiring in May of '24. Terms expiring was Ron Hands, Sean Luther, James Templeton, and Cheryl Gillum. Nominations are Brian Karas...
Charcheski.
I'm sorry?
Charcheski.
Charcheski, thank you. Sean Luther, Chris Gray, and Chad Yoker. Do we have a motion? Motion by Ricky Jones, the second by Commissioner Dwight Jones. Any discussion? Mr. Hudson, or you...
I see his address is Columbia, Tennessee. Does it have, does he have to be a resident of the county in order to...
Sheriff, do you want to, this is appointed.
No, she doesn't. We checked with legal, they don't have to be a resident of the county.
Okay, the sheriff is answering, no, they check with legal, they do not have to be. This is, this is a part of the sheriff's department. Are there any other questions? Seeing none, I assume you're ready to vote. If you're in favor, press your yes button. Opposed, your no. Any wish to change your vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, please.
23 yes, 0 no.
And they are appointed. The Equalization Board, two-year term expiring in May of '24. Term expiring John Maggar, Jerry Darnell, Tim McLaughlin, David Coleman, and David Byram. Nominations are John Magyar, Gary Darnell, Tim McLaughlin, David Coleman, and David Byram. The motion by Paul Webb, the second by Commissioner Dwight Jones. Any discussion? Seeing none, I assume you're ready to vote. If you're in favor, press your yes button. Opposed, your no. Any wish to change your vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, please.
23 yes, 0 no.
They are appointed. Hospital Board of Trustees, three-year term expiring in May of '25. Terms expiring Jim Cross, David Landrum, and Matt Williams. Nominations are Jim Cross, David Landrum, and Matt Williams. The motion by Commissioner Dwight Jones, the second by Commissioner Chaz Morton. Are there any discussion? Seeing none, I assume you're ready to vote. If you're in favor, press your yes button. Do you want to voice vote it?
Yes.
Okay. Record Keith as a yes, and record the vote, please.
21 yes, 2 abstain.
And they are appointed. Industrial Development Board, six-year term expiring in March of '28. Term expiring Matt Kelton, nomination Danny Anderson. The motion by Commissioner Brian Beathard, the second by Commissioner Dwight Jones. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I assume you're ready to vote. If you're in favor, press your yes button. Any wish to change your vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, please.
23 yes, 0 no.
Next on the agenda is the Consent Agenda. Entertaining a motion for the Consent Agenda, I guess. Motion by Commissioner Dwight Jones, the second by Commissioner Megan Guffey. If you're in favor of the Consent Agenda, press your yes button. Opposed, your no. Any wish to change your vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, please.
23 yes, 0 no.
Consent Agenda passes. Resolution 5-21-1. Resolution authorizing the Williams County Mayor to enter into a grant agreement with the state of Tennessee Department of Transportation and appropriating and amending the 2021-2022 capital projects budget by $337,500. Revenues to come from federal transit funding through state grant. The motion by Commissioner Smith, the second by Commissioner Dwight Jones. The Budget Committee was 3, 4, 0 against. Explanation, please.
This is federal-through-state funding for TMA Group to help with the purchase of vans and other transportation-related equipment.
Are there any questions? Seeing none, I assume you're ready to vote. If you're in favor, press your yes button. Betsy, do you want to voice vote?
She got it.
You got it, okay.
Very, very slow.
All right, anyone wish to change your vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, please.
23 yes, 0 no.
Resolution passes. Resolution 5-22-2. Resolution of the Board of Commissioners of Williamson County appropriating up to $250,000 for COVID testing services through Resolve Molecular Diagnostics LLC. Revenues to come from American Rescue Plan Act. The motion by Commissioner Webb, the second by Commissioner Steve Smith. The Budget Committee was 3, 4, 0 against. Explanation, please.
Mr. Chair, this is $250,000 contract with this firm to do testing for all county employees, including the Williamson County Schools employees for COVID testing. This contract can, does have a renewal option going through 2, 4, 24 if necessary. This will be paid, I repeat, through the American Recovery Act funds.
Are there any questions? Seeing none, I assume you're ready to vote. If you're in favor, press your yes button. Opposed, your no. Anyone wish to change your vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, please.
23 yes, 0 no.
Resolution passes. Resolution 5-22-3. Resolution of the Board of Commissioners of Williamson County appropriating $1,425,000 for the purchase of new ambulances. Revenues to come from American Rescue Plan Act funds. The motion by Commissioner Paul Webb, the second by Commissioner Tom Tomncliff. The Budget Committee was 3, 4, 0 against. Explanation, please.
Mr. Chairman, the public health emergency pandemic showed that we needed more ambulance units.
Paul, did you turn your mic off?
It's flashing white.
Try again.
A minute, that's flashing red. Mr. Chair, this is also being funded out of the American Recovery Act funds. During the pandemic, we found that ambulances were being used more by the hospital, not only for calls, but also to hold patients as the ER was crowded, and so this will fund three new units, fully funding them and equipping them. Again, this will be paid out of the ARPA funds, and I believe Mr. King is still here if you have any detailed questions from EMA.
Are there any questions? Commissioner Story.
Yeah, real quick, are they just located one location? Are they going to be spread across the county?
Does it need to be used throughout our...
So just where, okay, thank you.
Their fleet replacements is part of one new, some new and some are fleet replacements.
Yes, maybe additions are...
Okay. All right, are any other questions? Seeing none, I assume you're ready to vote. If you're in favor, press your yes button.
Yes.
Commissioner Hester, is voice voting a yes? Any wish to change your vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, please.
23 yes, 0 no.
Resolution passes. Resolution 5-22-4. Resolution of the Williams County Board of Commissioners of Williamson County appropriating $6 million to the Williams County Medical Center for expanding the emergency department. Revenues to come from the American Rescue Plan Act funds. The motion by Commissioner Landrum, the second by Commissioner Webb. The Budget Committee was 3, 4, 0 against. Explanation, please, Paul.
Mr. Chair, this is also...
Wait, let me... Okay.
Okay. This is also coming from the ARPA funds. As you can see from reading the resolution, during the pandemic, the emergency department at the hospital was very overcrowded. There was a lack of ICU capacity as well as social distancing's capacity, and those in the lower economic portion of the county used the emergency room more often than others. So this qualifies for expanding the ER, not only for those folks, but also for everyone in the county, to allow for social distancing and allowing more space as an ever-growing population. This remodeling and addition of the emergency department at the hospital also will include mental health areas, which is an emphasis of the ARPA Act.
Are there any questions? Seeing none, I assume you're ready to vote. If you're in favor, press your yes button. Betsy, voice voting a yes?
No.
Are you...
I'm voting yes.
Anyone wish to change your vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, please.
23 yes, 0 no.
Resolution passes. Resolution 5-22-5. Resolution of the Williams County Board of Commissioners appropriating up to $400,000 to the 21st Judicial Recovery Court. Revenues to come from the American Rescue Plan Act funds. The motion by Commissioner Webb, the second by Commissioner Aaron. The Budget Committee was 3, 4... Commissioner, I'm going too fast, excuse me. Budget Committee was 3, 4, 0 against. Explanation, please.
Mr. Chair, again, this is use of ARPA funds on the Recovery Court. They specialize in behavioral healthcare treatment, and this will allow them to match a state grant, this is 25% match, to match a state grant to improve and enlarge the facility, which provides healthcare treatment for those that need it, especially coming out of the court system. We do have a representative from the recovery house here if anyone has any specific questions.
Commissioner Lawrence.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Several years ago, I took a tour of the jail when Sheriff Long was still the sheriff, and when I was in there, I just asked him a question. I said, "Sheriff, how many people are in this jail right now because of drugs?" And he said 80%. So when it comes to law enforcement in our community, this is the defining issue. And I asked Sheriff Rhodes to put together some numbers because I was concerned about what I'd heard about the opioid epidemic, and just one statistic that jumped out at me is in the month of April, we... In the month of April, we had 12 ODs, which was a record for the month of April, and it kind of goes with the resolution we just passed for the emergency department, and they're dealing with this, I'm sure, in the emergency room. So I think if we take a look at what we are doing, or what we have done in the past in regards to law enforcement and drugs, I think we have to admit that what we have done has been largely unsuccessful, and we need a new model. And if you've never been to the drug recovery meetings, I know there's going to be another one at the last Monday in October, is that right, Jeff? There's another Drug Recovery Court meeting at the last Monday in October, but highly encourage all of you to go because the model that they are developing, I believe, is at least the start of the type of model that we need to move towards when it comes to dealing with the drug war. So just wanted to say that because I think for those of you who haven't been involved or maybe don't know a lot about it, you really should get involved and inform yourself of what they're doing because, you know, I do think it's the model for the future that we need to look at.
Anyone else? If you're in favor of the resolution, press your yes button. Commissioner Hester voiced yes. Any wish to change your vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, please.
22 yes, 0 no.
Resolution passes. Resolution 5-22-6. Resolution of the Board of Commissioners of Williamson County appropriating up to $350,000 to provide an administrative cost related to the use of American Rescue Plan Act funds. Revenues to come from the American Rescue Plan Act funds. The motion by Commissioner Smith, the second by Commissioner Ricky Jones. The Budget Committee was 3, 4, 0 against. Explanation, please, Steve.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As the caption stated, the ARPA funding provides for use of ARPA funds for administrative costs involved in keeping records and keeping the county out of trouble. This goes over a five-year period for use of the funds, and I would ask for your support.
Are there any questions? Commissioner Webb.
Mr. Chair, I will be abstaining because this directly affects me.
Are there any other questions? Seeing none, I assume you're... Commissioner Sturgeon.
Yeah, I was just curious how we came up with 350,000 as the number. Is that mostly salaries?
Yeah.
Yeah? For one person or more than one person?
Just, just one person.
It's salary and benefits for five years.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any questions, other questions? Seeing none, I assume you're ready to vote. If you're in favor, press your yes button. Commissioner.
I vote yes.
Anyone wish to change your vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, please.
21 yes, 1 abstain.
Resolution passes. Resolution 5-22-7. Resolution amending the 2021-22 Highway Department budget and appropriating $50,000 for personnel needs during severe inclement weather events. Revenues to come from unappropriated highway fund balance. The motion by Commissioner Landrum, the second by Commissioner Guffey. The Highway Commission was 5, 4, 0 against. Budget Committee was 3, 4, 0 against. Explanation, please, Commissioner Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We had some unusual weather events during the winter and early spring, and it accounted, it caused for additional personnel costs and overtime from the Highway Department.
Are there any questions? Seeing none, I assume you're ready to vote. If you're in favor, press your yes button, opposed, your no. Anyone wish to change your vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, please.
Twenty-two yes, zero no.
Resolution passes. Resolution five dash twenty-two dash eight. Resolution amending the 2021-22 Highway Department budget and appropriating up to $510,851.95 for paving expense on Arno Alice on a road, revenues to come from state aid program. The motion by Commissioner Smith, the second by Commissioner Lothers. The Highway Commission was five, four, zero against. Budget Committee was three, four, zero against. Explanation, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is state reimbursement for work that the Highway Department did on this particular section of Arno Road.
Are there any questions? Commissioner Dwight Jones.
I just wanted to thank Eddie Hood and the Highway Department for paving that road. They did a great job, and I appreciate all their hard work. Thank you.
Anything else? Hearing none, I assume you're ready to vote. If you're in favor, press your yes button, opposed, your no. Anyone wishing to change your vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, please.
Twenty-two yes, zero no.
Resolution passes. Resolution five dash twenty-two dash nine. Resolution authorizing the Williams County Mayor to sign a contract amendment with the State of Tennessee Department of Transportation for Hillsborough Road project. The motion by Commissioner Smith, the second by Commissioner Barb Sturgeon. Highway Commission was five, four, zero against. Budget Committee was three, four, zero against. Explanation, please, Commissioner Smith.
This is a contract with the state to work on the intersection of Old Hillsborough Road and Hillsborough Road to improve that intersection with turn lanes and make it a 90-degree intersection. And so, this is a transportation grant with the state, and we will, uh, we'll perform the work.
Are there any questions? Commissioner Williams.
Yeah, just a quick clarification question. So, I know we'd signed up previously, signed a contract with them to do that, and I believe it was supposed to occur a little bit earlier. If I'm reading this correctly, it looks like it's pushed that date out some and allowed us to keep our portion of contributing dollars.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, that is correct. Originally, we were going to have to put in 20, 25%, and then once we pointed out to them it's two state routes, they agreed to do it, but it is just delayed the whole time. We're still a year away, Matt, from getting to the point, but we'll have to bid the entire project. Any may come in higher than this, but it's their dollars. We'll be reimbursed for it. We'll just have to pay it out of our funds.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none, I assume you're ready to vote. If you're in favor, press your yes button, opposed, your no. Anyone wishing to change your vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, please.
Twenty-three yes, zero no.
Resolution passes. Resolution five dash twenty-two dash ten. Resolution authorizing the Williamson County to participate in an education incentive program by matching the state incentive program payment for qualified volunteer firefighters and establishing a similar program for qualified emergency responders personnel in Williamson County and appropriating and amending the 2021-22 Public Safety Budget, revenues to come from State of Tennessee and unappropriated county general funds. The motion by Commissioner David Landrum, the second by Commissioner Greg Lawrence. Law enforcement and public safety was five, four, zero against. Budget Committee was three, four, zero against. Explanation, please, Commissioner Mason.
Thank you. So, the state does a volunteer incentive training program for volunteers who work within our firefighter kind of EMS medical department. And so, we are matching those funds. In addition, we are creating our own incentive program for those that don't qualify for the state program. So, it's basically a way for us to give back to those that are volunteering in our community, especially out there in the rural areas, and making it safer for everybody else.
Are there any questions? Seeing none, I assume you're ready to vote. If you're in favor, press your yes button, opposed, your no. Anyone wish to change your vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, please.
Twenty-three yes, zero no.
Resolution passes. Resolution five dash twenty-two dash eleven. Resolution appropriating and amending the 2021-22 Parks and Recreation Department budget by $55,000, revenues to come for participant fees. The motion by Commissioner Smith, the second by Commissioner Megan Guffey. Parks and Recreation didn't meet, Budget Committee was three, four, zero against. Explanation, please.
These are fees received for use of the Performing Arts Center.
Are there any questions? Seeing none, I assume you're ready to vote. If you're in favor, press your yes button, opposed, your no. Anyone wishing to change your vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, please.
Twenty-three yes, zero no.
Resolution passes. Resolution five dash twenty-two dash twelve. Resolution accepting donations on behalf of Williamson County Animal Control and appropriating and amending the 2021-22 Animal Control Capital Projects Budget by $15,500, revenues to come from donations. The motion by Commissioner Smith, the second by Commissioner Landrum. Public Health didn't meet, Budget Committee was five, three, four, zero against. Explanation, please, Steve.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We received donations totaling $15,500 from the Young family for Miss Patty's catio. Where's Andrea? Also from Carol and David Horlocker for Get Acquainted Yard and for Jan V. Shifdasani for a cat kennel in the cat cottage in memory of Dinesh Sheth.
Good job with the names. Are there any questions? Seeing none, I assume you're ready to vote. If you're in favor, press your yes button, opposed, your no. Anyone wish to change your vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, please.
Twenty-three yes, zero no.
Resolution passes. Resolution five dash twenty-two dash thirteen. Resolution appropriating and amending the 2021-2022 Health Department budget with $1,516, revenues to come from donations. The motion by Commissioner Smith, the second by Commissioner Beathard. Public Health didn't meet, Budget Committee was three, four, zero against. Explanation, please.
Uh, money from donations.
Are there any questions? Seeing none, I assume you're ready to vote. If you're in favor, press your yes button, opposed, your no. Anyone wish to change your vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, please.
Twenty-three yes, zero no.
Resolution passes. Resolution five dash twenty-two dash fourteen. Resolution appropriating and amending to 2021-22 Veteran Services Budget by $1,000, revenues to come from memorial brick pavers. The motion by Commissioner Smith, the second by Commissioner Dwight Jones. Budget Committee was three, four, zero against. Explanation, please, Mr. Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. These are bricks that are sold as part of the Veterans Park. I do have an amendment to offer.
Go ahead.
I think the amount needs to be $1,682. Eighty-two, $1,682.
Need to change it in the header and the revenues and expenditures. We have a motion for an amendment. Do we have a second? We got, well, we got a second by Commissioner, I'll push the button faster. Are there any discussion on the amendment? Seeing none, I assume you're ready to vote. If you're in favor, press your yes button, opposed, your no. Anyone wish to change your vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, please.
Twenty-three yes, zero no.
The amendment passes. Now, we're back to the resolution as amended. Are there any questions on the resolution as amended? Seeing none, I assume you're ready to vote. If you're in favor, you press your yes button, opposed, your no. Key, you want to voice vote? It's not going through. You want to those, voice vote?
Uh, yes.
Okay. Anyone wish to change your vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, please.
Twenty-three yes, zero no.
Resolution passes. Resolution five dash twenty-two dash fifteen. Resolution appropriating and amending the 2021-22 Library Budget by $14,219, revenues to come from donations and contributions. The motion by Commissioner Webb, the second by Commissioner Beathard. Library Board was seven, four, zero against. Budget Committee was three, four, zero against. Explanation, please.
Uh, Mr. Chair, if you can see, this is primarily library fines in addition to some donations, which will be used for library books and media at the, within the county library system.
Are there any questions? Seeing none, I assume you're ready to vote. All in favor, press your yes button, opposed, your no. Anyone wishing to change your vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, please.
Twenty-three yes, zero no.
Resolution passes. Resolution five dash twenty-two dash sixteen. Resolution appropriating and amending the 2021-22 County Clerk's Budget by $160,000 for additional postage, revenues to come from unappropriated county general funds. The motion by Commissioner Smith, the second by Commissioner Dwight Jones. Budget Committee was three, four, zero against. Explanation, please, Commissioner Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. When the clerk's office processes renewals by mail, the revenue from that goes into county general funds. We need to replenish the postage account in the clerk's office so they will have enough funds to continue to do that process.
Commissioner Nations.
Do you think, Jeff, that this is related mostly to the fact that we're having to send out new tags this year, and maybe it'll go back down next year?
Yes, ma'am. When we initially were sending the license plates, we were able to send them as a large envelope. It was like a dollar and eighty-something cents. Then the post office came back and said we had to send them as like a package deal, and it was four dollars, it's $4.50 now to, for each plate that we mail out. But when they do it online and by mail, like Commissioner Smith was saying, the county collects $5 postage. So, the money's there. We collect the money. It just goes to the general fund, and we have to ask to get it back out. So, yeah, but it is directly related to the license plates being issued.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Are there any other questions? Seeing none, I assume you're ready to vote. If you're in favor, press your yes button, opposed, your no. Commissioner Hudson, is it not working? You want to voice? You want to voice vote it?
Uh, I just did it.
Oh, we got it, okay. Anyone wish to change your vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, please.
Twenty-three yes, zero no.
Resolution passes. Resolution five dash twenty-two dash seven, seventeen. Resolution appropriating and amending 2021-22 Solid Waste Budget by $217,400, revenues to come from unappropriated solid sanitation, solid waste sanitation fund balance. The motion by Commissioner Smith, the second by Commissioner Dwight Jones. Budget Committee was three, four, zero against. Explanation, please.
Thank you, Ms. Chair. This is moving some money into primarily diesel fuel and gasoline to account for higher prices.
Are there any questions? Seeing none, I assume you're ready to vote. If you're in favor, press your yes button, opposed, your no. Anyone wish to change your vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, please.
Twenty-three yes, zero no.
Resolution passes. Resolution five dash twenty-two dash eighteen. Resolution renaming a portion of Hunter Road to Old Hunter Road and to record the change in the Williams County road list. The motion by Commissioner Webb, the second by Commissioner Tonacliff. Highway Commission was five, four, zero against. Explanation, please, Commissioner Webb.
As you can see from the map, this renaming will help end some confusion with two roads having the same name.
Are there any questions? Seeing-
Can we do that all over the county?
Seeing none, I assume you're ready to vote. If you're in favor, press your yes button, opposed, your no. Anyone wishing to change your vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, please.
Twenty-three yes, zero no.
Resolution passes. Resolution five dash twenty-two dash nineteen. Resolution declaring certain solid waste department property surplus and authorizing the transfer of the surplus property. The motion by Commissioner Smith, the second by Commissioner Herbert. Property Committee was five, four, zero against. Budget Committee was three, four, zero against. Explanation, please, Commissioner Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. These are pieces of equipment that have outlived their useful life and need to be disposed of.
Are there any questions? I believe I'm going to add a comment that they are being appraised and are going to be made available. They're still useful, and they're going to be made available to other counties, I think, is what. He's shaking his head, so these aren't just being junked, so we'll make them available to other counties. Are there any questions? Seeing none, I assume you're ready to vote. In favor, press your yes button, opposed, your no. Anyone wishing to change your vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, please.
Twenty-three yes, zero no.
Resolution passes. Resolution five dash twenty-two dash twenty. Resolution to surplus and approve the conveyance of animal surgical furniture and miscellaneous property and authorizing Williams County Mayor to execute a documentation needed to complete the conveyance of surplus property. The motion by Commissioner Smith, the second by Commissioner Dwight Jones. Budget Committee was three, four, zero against. Did the property committee hear this? It was, the property committee was five to zero, Public Health didn't meet. Explanation, please, Commissioner Smith.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. This is equipment from the old animal control facility that is no longer needed, and as you heard in the description, it'll be made available to other local governments.
Are there any questions? Seeing none, I assume you're ready to vote. If you're in favor, press your yes button, opposed, your no. Anyone wish to change your vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, please.
Twenty-three yes, zero no.
Resolution passes. Resolution five dash twenty-two dash twenty-one. Resolution to opt-in to the provision of Tennessee Code annotated 17-2-123 and to approve the creation and authorize the appointment of a probate master position for the Williamson County, Tennessee, effective July 1, 2022. County, Tennessee, effective July 1, 2022. The motion by Commissioner Smith, the second by Commissioner Dwight Jones. Human Resources Committee was five, four, zero against. Budget Committee was three, four, zero against. This does require a two-thirds vote margin. Explanation, please, Commissioner Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The growth in matters being handled by the clerk and master's office called for the creation under state law of probation master who would handle the probate affairs while leaving the clerk and master to handle court cases. And so this position was included in the position request that we addressed at the budget meetings. So this is adding a position to the clerk and master's office.
Commissioner Mason.
That may have answered some of my questions. I was curious if this person would have a staff underneath them, meaning we're hiring a probate master and then we're going to be looking at hiring assistants and where their office would be located concerning there's no more space in the courthouse. But it sounds like it's just one person who's going to go into the clerk and master's office.
Yes.
Okay.
The clerk and master was handling both of those positions, basically. So we're replacing her with two people.
Are there any other questions? Seeing none, I assume you're ready to vote. If you're in favor, press your yes button. Commissioner Hudson, is voice voting yes? Anyone who wants to change your vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, please.
Twenty-three, yes. Zero, no.
Resolution passes. Resolution five dash twenty-two dash twenty-two. Resolution authorizing the county mayor to execute a contract between the State of Tennessee Department of Transportation and Williamson County for a trash collecting grant for fiscal year 2022-23. The motion by Commissioner Landrum, the second by Commissioner Sturgeon. Law enforcement was five, four, zero against. Budget Committee was three, four, zero against. Explanation, please, Commissioner Mason.
Apparently I'm not fast enough to push the motion button for my motion. So I appreciate you giving me this time to talk. Essentially, this is a grant that we receive where part of it has to be used for litter education, but it is money being provided to the county.
Are there any questions? Seeing none, I assume you're ready to vote. If you're in favor, press your yes button. Opposed, your no. Anyone who wants to change your vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, please.
Twenty-three, yes. Zero, no.
Resolution passes. Resolution five dash twenty-two dash twenty-three. A resolution amending the number of members on the Williamson County Public Library Board of Trustees. The motion by Commissioner Webb, the second by Commissioner Dwight Jones. Library Board of Trustees was seven, four, zero against. Budget Committee was three, four, zero against. Explanation, please, Commissioner Webb.
Mr. Chair, what's happening this year is the regional libraries across the state are sunsetting and thus that will create some opportunities for people to serve on the library board. And this was a time that the Library Board of Trustees thought it would be a good time to add two people to make the total number nine. What you may not know is also the Secretary of State and the state librarian have sunset the regional library board, but also term limited the members of the Board of Trustees. And this is statewide to two consecutive terms, and they have to set off a term. So in order to try to maintain some kind of continuity in history, the county Board of Trustees thought increasing this to nine was in the best interest of the county. And you'll see down here in the close to the end, one of these members will be a one-year term, and then they can serve two full three-year terms, and another shall be a two-year term. And after that, they can serve two, three-year terms. Then everyone on the board will be at three-year, two, three-year terms maximum.
Commissioner Lathers.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I've been asked if these members have kind of a regional influence or if it's just at large for the, you know, for the board. Do we try to look at representation around the county?
My term on the board is I've always asked for them to look at geographical representation. Sometimes across the country, it's hard to get people to serve on volunteer boards, especially library boards. So that is a charge. It's trying to get, frankly, younger people, males, and people from across the county. Since the county system serves all of the county, the Spring Hill has a library that serves both Murray and Williamson County sides, and Brentwood is a separate library. So the county system goes from Nolansville all the way to Fairview and then Leapers Fork and Bethesda and probably Mr. and soon to be hopefully Thompson Station.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions? Seeing none, I assume you're ready to vote. If you're in favor, press your yes button. Opposed, your no. Anyone who wants to change your vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, please.
Twenty-three, yes. Zero, no.
Resolution passes. Resolution five dash twenty-two dash twenty-four. Resolution authorizing the Williamson County mayor to execute a memorandum of understanding with the city of Spring Hill concerning the pre-development activities related to a potential sports facility. The motion by Commissioner Smith, the second by Commissioner Dwight Jones. The sports authority was seven, four, zero against. Budget Committee was three, four, zero against. Explanation, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You may have read recently that there is some interest on the part of a development in Spring Hill and the Predators to explore the possibility and viability of a sports complex in that development in Spring Hill. They're talking about two sheets of ice at this time to be operated by the Predators. County and Spring Hill are interested in doing their own feasibility study to the tune of fifty to sixty thousand dollars, we anticipate. And so this is a memorandum where Spring Hill and the county would share the cost of that study.
Commissioner Hester.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Do we have any approximate idea of where this would be located? I know where June Lake is on Buckner Lane. Would it be closer to Thompson Station, Road East? Do we know?
I'm not familiar with that. It is in the June Lake development, and it is close to where the new interchange off 65 is coming in. And that was part of the reason for the interest in that area was access off the interstate.
Thank you. Thank you, Steve. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Are there any other questions? Mr. Sturgeon.
Yeah, thank you. I'm just curious, why in this particular situation does the county want to be 50-50 participant?
I would defer to the mayor on that.
Part of the, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, part of the evolution of this was looking at the tourism amount of dollars that are coming into our county based on feasibility. Commissioner Smith is correct. The money, the sharing of the money to pay for the study, which we think is around fifty or sixty thousand, it'd be thirty on each part, is to get a second opinion. We're getting input from the developer. We're getting input from some other folks telling us what this could do for us in the event for our county. And we're trying to determine, is this the best avenue for us to do? But it's tourism dollars, it's tax dollars, it's revenue for your county, city, head county.
Okay, but we've done other things in the county where the county did not participate in the. Is this going to give us some say in where it goes and how it's done? Is that true?
Well, the developer will put it where it's best. If the study comes back, it'll be between the developer and the, possibly the Predators. I'm not ready to name that because they've not come out and said that, but everyone else has. That will be a determination from them where that location goes in that development. The city of Spring Hill and the county are looking to share and to seeing if it will do what it says it's going to do. There have been other incidences where we in the county have done joint ventures. It's really like a public-private partnership. We've done joint ventures with Franklin, Spring Hill, Nolansville, several other cities where we've combined some sports activity. Usually those are rolled up underneath some kind of a parks and recreation program.
So does it look like this will be in the city of Spring Hill?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so I hate to ask the question, but I can't. Were we partners in the amphitheater as well?
No.
Okay. So I'm hoping for a better outcome, is what I'm thinking.
Well, I think those are two different elements. First of all, in Spring Hill, they've got resources. They're addressing a lot of the needs that the three individuals spoke here tonight have addressed through traffic, traffic studies, implementation of the programs. Clearly, though, inside those cities, they have jurisdictional base. And as much as we have tried to help the Thompson Station, I think the gist of the conversation tonight was looking at these urban growth boundaries down the road when you're not, I think one of the ladies said they're not being a good neighbors. But this is an entirely different thing from a standpoint of revenue, and there is a huge, I won't say need at this point, but there's a lot of people involved that would like to see sheets of ice in our community, not only for our citizens, but for tournament play too, when they come into town.
Can I ask one more question?
Man, I'm fine with it.
Is this facility going to be for the Preds to actually compete or is this a training facility for them?
So I'm not at liberty to disclose that.
Okay.
But it'll be for the community.
Okay.
Commissioner Lathers.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think that my question was answered. I also had the concern about location, 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 where we had some residents here, but it does sound that it's going to be projected to be off of Interstate 65. So that was answered for me. Thank you. At 8:40 and 65?
Commissioner Lawrence.
Mayor, would this possibly be something you say for the community that our high school teams and our area high school hockey teams might be able to utilize?
I think they are utilizing. I think it's important for everyone here to know, this is not a done deal. We are evaluating it. However, there have been four other communities, four other counties that have looked at this kind of a model. You probably know of two of the models. One is over at the old Hickory Holler, Hickory Mall area, not Holler, Hickory Mall area. Kind of my East Tennessee slang jumped out there, didn't it? And then recently Bellevue. They're also looking at this in the Montgomery County, and they're looking at it in Sumner County or Robertson County. One other community is doing it. And in all of those areas, it has been well received for not only tournament play, local play, high school play, and things like that.
Are there any other questions? Thank you, ma'am. Seeing none, I assume you're ready to vote. If you're in favor, press your yes button. Opposed, your no. Anyone who wants to change your vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, please.
Twenty-three, yes. Zero, no.
Resolution passes. Resolution five dash twenty-two dash twenty-five. Resolution authorizing the Williamson County mayor to execute a quitclaim deed with the city of Franklin to transfer ownership of property known as the Veteran Park property to Williamson County. The motion by Commissioner Smith, the second by Commissioner Dwight Jones. Property Committee was five, four, zero against. Budget Committee was three, four, zero against. Explanation, please, Mr. Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Joint ownership of the Veterans Park at Five Points in downtown did not prove to be efficient and effective. And in discussions with the city, which has a small portion of that, they finally said, you just take this portion of that and manage the whole park. So that's what we're doing.
Are there any questions? Seeing none, I assume you're ready to vote. If you're in favor, press your yes button. Opposed, your no. Anyone who wants to change your vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, please.
Twenty-three, yes. Zero, no.
Resolution passes. Resolution five dash twenty-two dash twenty-six. Resolution authorizing the expenditure of funds collected from the one-half percent increase in local option sales and use tax and amend the 2021-22 budget. The motion by Commissioner Smith, the second by Commissioner Beathard. Budget Committee was three, four, zero against. Explanation, please, Commissioner Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a resolution that authorizes the county to spend the proceeds of the half-cent sales tax as it was intended. So I would ask for your approval.
Commissioner Hester.
Sorry, I pressed the wrong button by accident.
Are there any other questions? Seeing none, I assume you're ready to vote. If you're in favor, press your yes button. Opposed, your no. Anyone who wants to change your vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, please.
Twenty-three, yes. Zero, no.
This time, that concludes our agenda. We'll make one follow-up announcement on the Memorial Day at the celebration at the Five Points. Be at 11 o'clock on Memorial Day. Are there any other, anything else for the board? We are adjourned.